Good evening and thank you for joining us at our City Council meeting tonight. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson, here.
Bray.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Or.
Yep, here.
And left.
Here. Thank you. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after which, if you would remain standing, for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from April 13 to the April 13, 27, May 4, and May 11, 2017 budget development meetings, the clarification in regular council meetings of April 20, May 4, May 18, 2017, and the May 11, 2017 study session. B. Payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of May, 2017.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the City. Tonight I am presenting the payroll and material claims for the month of May. Payroll and material claims totaled $7,464,866. Payroll-related claims were $3,460,577. We had 770 employees at the end of the month, and we had changes in bill positions of a decrease in two in the full-time status, an increase of seven in the full-time status, and an increase of 34 in the seasonal status, for an overall increase of 39. Vendor claims totaled $4,4,289. I've listed for you all vendor claims that are 10,000 or more, and I've highlighted the large vendor claims of 3,000 or more. Bennett County Solid Waste, $89,102. That's sanitation for landfill fees. Bennett County Auditor, $126,788. This is a legal expense for the annual sixth district court support. CED Incorporated, $162,215. Water Pollution Control Plant, variable frequency drives and electrical filter. Conrad and Bishkop Incorporated, $65,456. The fuel fund for fuel. HDR Incorporated, $80,660. Water Pollution Control Engineering Services for the phosphorus design. Hydro Specialties Company, $176,640. Water Department for meters. Idaho Transportation Department, $284,058. The federal aid project fund for the Benton Street Bridge. Idaho Water Company LLC, $121,409. This is for a water right purchase. Intermountain Claims, $64,369. Workers' comp, admin fees and claims. Jack B. Parsons Companies, $119,039. CDBG Fund, Frederick Gill Sidewalk Grant. Jackson Group Peterbilt, $500,910. Sanitation for two 2018 automated trucks for the residential. Knife River, $591,492. Airport, this is for the taxiway E and A and the terminal apron and rehab runway projects. RSCI, $243,772. WPC, phosphorus project contractor progress payment number 23. Superior LLC, formerly Sun Guard, $85,159 annual maintenance for the software system. Sun Trust Equipment Finance Leasing Corporation, $73,229. Street Department, it's the payment number five for the five-year asphalt paper. TO Engineering Company, $55,072. Airport engineering fees for their projects. White &amp; Jankowski LLP, $38,753. Legal services, February and April. Idaho Power Company, $145,431. Multiple funds, electric utility. Wells Fargo Purchase Card Program, $346,767. May P. Card Cycle. Remaining large vendor claims are presented for your review. This report includes 89 percent of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I present to you the May purchase card activity. We had 1,355 transactions totaling $346,767, and we had 157 cardholders use their card, and we had six purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than 10,000, and we've listed those individuals, the amounts, and descriptions of the type of purchases they made for the month. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, I have one question. So with vendor claims, you've highlighted the important ones, I guess. All of these then are budgeted or bid approval?
Yes. Right. They go through the process. We have the documentation on the bid documents that come in, or the departments have them in their custody, and every item that comes through, it's verified that they have authority within their department for a purchase, and so it's therefore validated. And tonight you had the budget execution report, so you can see nobody is over-expended within their authority lines.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to C. Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sharon Seiber to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, replacing Trent Rowe, whose term expired. Dr. Seiber's term will begin June 2, 2017 and will expire June 2, 2019. D. Housing Authority of Pocatello Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lori Crainy to serve as a member of the Housing Authority of Pocatello Board, replacing Darlene Gary, who resigned. Ms. Crainy's term will begin June 2, 2017, and will expire June 23, 2020. E. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Darren Black to continue his service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Black's term will begin June 7, 2017, and will expire June 7, 2019. F. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Fort Hall Replica Commission Representative. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Judy Taylor to continue her service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, representing the Fort Hall Replica Commission. Ms. Taylor's term will begin June 8, 2017, and will expire June 8, 2019. G. Surplus of Equipment Parks Vehicle for 2017 City Auction. Council may wish to approve the surplus of a 1993 GMC truck from the Parks Department, which was sold at the 2017 City Auction on May 13, 2017. Parks staff intended to auction the 1993 GMC truck but inadvertently listed the 2006 GMC truck to the surplus. Parks will continue to utilize the 2006 GMC truck in their department.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Moore. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Or.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Communication and Proclamation. We do have one proclamation, but before Councilmember Johnston reads that, we have a scout in the audience. We'd like you to stand up and tell us what troop you're from, and I hope your leader knows what troop you're from.
Income.
From Income? Perfect. You got a troop number?
It's 289.
289? Well, thank you very much for being here. That's quite the travel up north from Income. Appreciate it. So we will move on to the proclamation. Is Adopt a Shelter Cat will be read by Councilmember Jim Johnston.
Whereas the Pocatello Animal Shelter impounds approximately 1,800 cats every year, and whereas only 27 percent of the cats are claimed by their owners, transferred to other agencies or adopted into new homes, and whereas across the country shelters are facing the same crisis, impounding millions of cats yearly, and whereas the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals recognizes the serious danger cats face in animal shelters and promotes Adopt a Shelter Cat Month during June each year, and whereas the Pocatello Animal Shelter staff and volunteers have joined with the ASPCA to showcase the many adoptable cats at our local shelter and to educate the public about the plight of many cats in our community, and whereas there are many wonderful felines waiting for their new homes. Now, therefore, Ryan Seblad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim June 2017 as Adopt a Shelter Cat Month in Pocatello, and urge citizens to join our staff and volunteers in supporting this important event and to consider adopting a homeless cat or finding another way to adopt.
I thought you were a canine guy.
I am both.
Did you all attend?
Welcome, please.
I'm Renix Director of Animal Services. I just want to say thank you very much. I brought Veronica here, my kitten, to help accept the proclamation. Between the two of us, we'd like to say thank you for your continued support of the pets and the people of Pocatello. We appreciate your service very much, and we look forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On June 8, at 9:30 a.m., will be an executive session. At 10:30 a.m. will be a study session, followed by a budget development meeting. June 15, 9 a.m. budget development meeting. 5 p.m. Fire Union Quarterly Update. 6 p.m...
I missed that.
I missed that too, quite frankly. We'll go ahead and repeat it for you, Siri. 6 p.m. Regular Council Meeting. Other events, June 10, Parks and Recreation, June Joy in the Journey Jog Fun Run. Animal Services Alley Cat Grill Events, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. at the shelter. June 18, Father's Day at the Zoo. Fathers will receive 50 percent discount off their admission when they are accompanied by a paid child.
Mr. Mayor, is there an event at the Fort Hall Replica that's coming up soon that we should announce? John?
Actually, yes. It's this Saturday, starting at 10 a.m. It's a grand opening ceremony for Fort Hall for the season. As you'll recall, the city's entered into agreement with Bennett County Historical Society to take over operation of that facility, so in conjunction with the Fort Hall Replica Commission, they'll be hosting that grand opening event starting at 10 a.m.
And you're cooking the chili?
Alan is cooking the chili.
Alan, the good. It'll be fine then.
Sorry, John. He's really good on steaks, though. I know that.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing. Zoning Map Amendment, Bertie Thompson, East Terry Street. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Ruth S. Decker, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a zoning map amendment to four property located between Bertie Thompson and East Terry Street, specifically landlaying between 2302 and 2350 East Terry Street. The request is to rezone the property from residential estate to residential low density. The property has a comprehensive plan map designation of residential. At their meeting on May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have you had any exporté communication or contact?
No.
Okay. Thank you, then. We would look for the applicant to...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying at 600 East Oak here in Pocatello. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight to review this project. The parcel land that we're discussing tonight is located in between basically Bertie Thompson Drive, which is here on the map, and East Terry Street, which is kind of on the south side of the map. This is a very unique area. Probably haven't dealt with a more varied zoning area in Pocatello as I've been working over the last 20 years. We have a substantial area of residential low density. We have bounded on the west side some residential high density. We have neighborhood commercial professional-type zoning kind of on the west and south side. There's a wide industrial zoning across Terry Street and to the south, and then on the east, there's a residential estate parcel. There's also some university lands in that area, so I can't think of another time where we've had that many zones kind of mix in an area. Honestly, it's crazy. Why we're here tonight is we're talking about essentially this red box that we have drawn here. So the parcel boundaries that we like to construct a project is this area. The request for the zone is this area. Originally, it was zoned, or it is currently zoned, as residential estates. You can kind of see how that happened. When the zoning went into effect here a few years ago, you kind of look at the city with a broad brush, and you kind of say, okay, there's maybe a steep area here, and so that kind of could be residential estates. There's a utility-challenged parcel here that would create a certain zoning, but primarily, what drives the residential zoning is the topography. Okay? And so this line was drawn here to kind of distinguish a steeper area from a not-so-step area on our parcel. So what I can tell you is that if you kind of tip this down, you can see that that line was maybe drawn a little less accurately than it could have been done. So the ridge kind of follows along here and kind of follows that area. That's tough to describe. It's tough to draw on a map. Really, we don't have time to do that when we're looking at the city as a whole. And so we've done some additional study on this parcel, and we believe and we know that we can accommodate a project that looks similar to this. Although we're not discussing the project, this is some of our preliminary work that we've done to know that we can support the zoning, and based on that, we believe that this parcel should be rezoned to residential low density from residential estates. The steep parcel, or the steep portions of the parcel, we're still intending to leave, not really disturb those in too much, to a great extent, but essentially, my client would like to do a twin home project. Twin homes are not allowed in residential estates, and so the residential low density is needed to support the project that they would like to complete here. And again, this is a general representation of what we would like to do. There'd be approximately 17 units, although we haven't finalized the design. That just is a concept. I will say that the twin home concept has been applied a lot in this area, and this project is very consistent with what its neighbors are. There's twin homes here across the street. There's some single-family to the east or the north, but it is, there's a pretty good elevation grade from the single-family homes that are there to where this project would be located. And one thing I want to just point out a little bit to you. If you look here, the only development that's really happened in the residential estates parcel that was originally zoned residential estates are fourplexes, duplexes, and things like that. And so we're really not asking for something that hasn't already been done in this area, and we feel like planning and zoning reviewed it fairly well, and there was, you know, an extensive review at that level. They supported the project unanimously, and we would ask for your support to approve the zoning change request. There's questions?
Any questions, Council? Okay. Thank you, Mitch.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Matthew Lewis, Planning Division Manager. It's good to be with you this evening. As Mitch noted, there are two vacant parcels totaling approximately 11 acres surrounded by developed land. This development of these properties could be considered as infill. The approximate 4.6-acre parcel abutting Bertie Thompson Drive is zoned residential low density, which allows construction of townhomes and two-family dwelling units. The area of the proposed rezoning is currently zoned residential estate, which does not allow townhomes or two-family dwelling units. The minimum lot size for a townhome unit in residential low density is 6,000 square feet per unit. The minimum lot size for a single-family home is 7,500 square feet in residential low and 15,000 square feet in residential estate. Land uses adjacent to and near the proposed rezoning include single-family residences, townhomes, and multifamily development. Professional office uses abut the property on the southwest corner. Long Semiconductor is located south of the property. Rezoning the property to the requested residential low density would be consistent with most land uses in the area. The difference in zoning from residential low to residential estate is mainly due to steeper topography. The area approximated the difference. A closer review of average grades finds that the steepest area is at the southwest portion of the site, averaging 30 percent. This is depicted in Exhibit 3 in your packets. The 4.6-acre parcel which abuts Bertie Thompson has an average grade of 6.8 percent, and the property abutting, the 10-town homes on the northern boundary and the apartments to the west, has an average grade of 6.5 percent. Grades increase south from 13.5 percent to 30 percent. Based on this analysis, staff finds that the overall topography is not significantly different from other areas that are zoned residential low density, such as and not limited to Juniper Reserve subdivision, Trail Creek Estates, and most of Satterfield Developments. Infrastructure such as water and sewer can be extended from Bertie Thompson Drive. An eight-inch sewer line is located under Terry Street. Primary access would be from Bertie Thompson. The steep grade adjacent to Terry prohibits access with any future development. Proper notice was provided to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Sonage was posted on the site with an additional sign on Bertie Thompson Drive, although not required because the land is already zoned residential low density in Terry Street. Notice was published in the Idaho State Journal, as required per Municipal Code Section 1702.300. Several phone calls were received by staff regarding the request following the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Concerns included the type of density of development and increased traffic on Bertie Thompson Drive. No written correspondence has been received as of beginning of this meeting. Based on the findings fact-provided, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by a 5-to-0 vote approval of the rezoning request. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, Mayor and Council.
Council?
Is there any possibility of development on the Terry side of that with the steepness?
No.
Cut, please.
Okay. Ford?
No, I forgot it.
Council President, you acted like you were going to say something before Jim interrupted, but maybe he asked the same question you had.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Did you remember now?
Well, were there any conditions by staff on this?
No. There's no conditions because it's not a contract rezoning. It's a straight-out rezone to another different type of residential, and the only thing that the residential low opens up the use to are two things, would be the townhomes and two family dwelling units.
Okay. I see two things on the map here about easement. Access 30 feet wide on both the cul-de-sac. I prefer wait until after the public hearing to ask any further questions, if I could, please.
Okay. Okay. Any others?
Thank you, Mayor.
So we'll move on. You said there were no correspondence, so we'll move on to any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. If you want to walk up here and state your name and sign your name on that sheet right there.
I can do that.
We'll give you three minutes to talk to us.
I'm Linda Muir, number one. I live on Bertie Thompson Drive. When I was on vacation, when I came home and found this in my mail, I questioned why, if this on Terry can't be developed, why does it need to be rezoned? And up above Terry, where they want to build the homes, will that be below the hill that's there, or will it be right above the hill? There's a grade level that's... There's a knoll back there. Will that be taken down? Will they build on that? Will it be below that knoll? That's kind of my question.
Okay.
And also, we have a little herd of deer there, quail, little kill deers, and what's going to happen to those? Will there be any wild space left? I guess maybe that's a question. You'll get question answers for me?
We don't, but I'm sure that in a second Mitch will have an opportunity.
Some will have some. Okay. That's just a couple of questions I had. When I bought the place, I was actually told that no one could build behind me, which was in 1999.
I love realtors do stuff.
Which, as I got older and a little smarter, I think real estate agents sort of pushed that just a little bit, and...
You got to watch those guys.
Yeah, I know.
They kill their mother for 25 minutes.
I knew there was a church that was supposed to be built there. The church apparently is no longer an issue as far as they sold it, or they don't own the property anymore?
Yeah, they built somewhere.
They sold it and built somewhere else.
Okay. All right.
So your home's on Bertie Thompson?
I'm on Bertie Thompson.
On which side?
I'm on...
You go up...
Yeah, you go up the hill, and I'm on the right-hand side, on the south side. And I'm not the last one, but second to the last one on that, yeah.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then we would ask Mitch if he would like to answer those questions. Okay, then we will ask Mitch if he would like to answer those questions.
Thank you. I guess the first one I would address is why the parcel needs to be rezoned, primarily because it's residential estates, which does not allow twin homes, which they're one, my clients want to do a association-based twin-home project similar to, like, Mariah Meadows on Pocatello Creek Road, or some of those types that really kind of cater to a more, I guess I wouldn't say elderly clientele, but that facet of our community.
Quieter.
Yeah, quieter.
Seasoned.
Seasoned, that's a good word there.
Responsible citizens.
You know, they can't really preclude people from, from purchasing in there, but that's their intent, is to kind of go after that. And a lot of the elderly people like the exterior maintenance and the, the snow removal and all that kind of stuff. So, the main reason for the zone is to support that project. Without the zone change, we're not going to be able to do that as conceived. You can notice that a good share of what we're proposing is allowed already under the zone. There's only a few units that are not, um, that are outside of the zone that we're talking about. So, would we have to rezon the property on Terry Street? Not necessarily, but it kind of makes sense to just do that whole parcel. We aren't intending on developing down there, or, you know, really doing anything. So, I would say that the steeper areas of the site would remain natural, and those would be still able to support some wildlife. You know, again, this is a parcel kind of in the heart of the city. It's adjacent to some of the more employment, larger employment bases that we have within the community, and it probably makes sense. We have utilities available to support the development. The, the land can support, as we've done our initial studies, and so it probably makes sense for us to maybe develop this piece rather than, you know, jump out somewhere else to support that population base. It'll be much more economical for the city to have residents here than somewhere else. So, I would just add that. Um, and I think that's it. I was, I think I got all of them.
The hill, she asked about the hill.
I'm not sure where the hill is that we're discussing, but I will say that if it's, you know, if you can see it probably from the top, then it's going to be developed. That's, that's where we're intending on placing the units.
Okay. But the reality is, about 90 percent of that is already, um, zoned correctly.
Right.
Just looking for those little pieces.
Yeah, we're looking for, uh, five or six additional units there that, that wouldn't be supported. And it is a little, a little unusual to have a parcel where there's two different zones on it. That's, you know, we don't run into that very often either. Okay.
True question.
Okay, yes.
Now, this is the end, I guess, of the public hearing. So, uh, I mean, is your, is your client aware that when, when this gets into development stage, that the fire department has to go up there and look at this and, and could possibly require a secondary egress?
Um, we believe the number of units that we have on there are less than what would be required.
Okay, that's, that's in an ordinance, right?
I believe, yes.
And as, as you're well aware, if you've ever been here very often, is that sometimes the ordinances are, there are exceptions to the ordinances. In fact, there's one later on the agenda tonight. So, I, I just, I don't know what the outcome will be. Now, Ms., Ms. Muir indicated quail. I would, I'm assuming they may be partridge rather than quail.
Chucker.
Yeah, but if they are in fact quail, uh, because of, you may, I mean, I, if they're quail, I'd, I'd clarify with Fish and Game on any.
When we develop the project, as we move forward, some of the permitting that is required, we are required to contact Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, uh, some of those other people, obviously Archaeological Resources and things like that. And so, they will do a cursory review of the proposed project and notify us, as well as the city, of any potential impacts that may result as we move through the, the permitting process. Whether there's quail, I don't know. I honestly don't know.
Now, for Ms. Muir, I don't know for sure what you're talking, but you are below the sandstone bluffs up there.
I know.
The sandstone, now, as you get farther up the hill, there's some old sandstone cliffs up, up there.
Um, yeah, I think we're way, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're just, you're just above the, whatever that-
The doctor's office right there.
Right, just a professional service building there below.
Yeah, we're just adjacent to, uh, yeah, the doctor's office is there.
And if you, if you're going to have repairing areas there, I'd encourage that you enhance that so that we could have a discussion in the future about the number of deer crossing east Terry. So, the people of Indian Hills don't think they're the only ones who have that problem.
It's not going to run the deer off.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Another long day.
Thank you, Mitch. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, the items be, before you, how do you wish to proceed?
I move, we approve the request.
Second? We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Brown.
Just a clarification, we're not approving any project, we're just doing the rezon.
Just the rezon, just approval of the rezon. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, resolution moratorium on off-premise billboard signs. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution, subject to legal department review, regarding placing a moratorium on off-premise billboard signs. Portale Municipal Code Section 15.20.240, to allow staff time to research and, and propose regulations which address the dangers and risks associated with life, healthy, health, safety, and welfare, as well as traffic safety concerns and lighting in relation to nearby residential properties. Counselman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Moore. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Or?
No.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item eight, exception request Spindarella event 2017. Counsel may wish to consider approving the following request from Pocatello Women's Cycling, represented by De, by Deanne Young, in regards to the annual Spindarella Women's Cycling event to be held on June 16 and 17, 2017, in Lower Ross Park and on around the streets of Pocatello. A, Pocatello Women's Cycling seeks an exception to City Ordinance 5.06.010 to allow vendor sales of food and beverages in Ross Park for the annual Spindarella event. If the exception is granted, the event sponsors will be required to submit the required application, provide, provide proof of liability insurance, and pay the application vendor permit fees. And B, Pocatello Women's Cycling seeks continued approval for annual event and associated ex, uh, let's see, and associated exceptions to City Ordinance 5.06.010 in future years, subject to the Parks and Recreation Director's review, and barring any significant change or changes to events.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we approve this exception request and stipulations A and B that are part of it.
Second. We've got a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston.
Clarification?
Counselman Orr.
When it says beverages, does that include alcoholic beverages also, just so that we're crystal clear on this, so we-
Yes, it does.
Okay, could we add that, that as just a, including alcoholic beverages, so there's no, no question of what, what the intent of this is?
So, so would you like that added into the motion?
I'm fine with that.
So, is, okay with the motion that being added into the motion, and we were fine with the second. So, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, waiver request Zoo Idaho Zoological Society fundraising event. Counsel may wish to consider the following request to waive ordinance to allow a Zoo Idaho Zoological Society, ZIZ, wine walk event to be held in June 17, 2017. A, ZIZ seeks permission to allow individuals to remain in the zoo until 10:00 PM, and B, allow wine to be served by licensed vendors at the event. If the waiver is granted, ZIZ will purchase all necessary permits related to the event, subject to legal department review. Vendors are donating the wine to be served at the wine walk.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
I'll second that "ziz."
Thank you.
As is.
As is.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Orr. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, local professional services agreement, Lewis Street Bridge project. Counsel may wish to authorize the mayor to sign a local professional services agreement between Keller Associates Incorporated and the city of Pocatello for engineering services during construction of the Lewis Street Bridge project, subject to legal department review, for an amount not to exceed $21,526. Payment will be made by local highway technical assistance council, LHTAC. The city share is included in the amount paid to the state per the state and local agreement, construction which was approved by council at the June 27, 2016 special meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Orr?
I would move that we approve the local services agreement with Keller Associates on the Lewis Street Bridge and authorize the mayor to sign the documents pertinent to that project upon legal review.
Second. We have a motion by Orr and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Or?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, server power supply bid contract, IT department. Counsel may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding the city's information technology IT department server room power upgrade project. A, accept a lower responsive, responsive bid received from Wheeler Electric Incorporated in the amount of $74,470, and if the bid is accepted, B, approve the contract with Wheeler Electric Incorporated in the amount of $74,470, and authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the project are available in, in the City Hall building improvement and emergency repair funds.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, video inspection vehicle bid WPC. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and, and award the bid for a 2017 CCTV high-definition video inspection vehicle in the amount of $281,242 to Merrick Sales LLC. Funds for the vehicle purchase are available in the Water Pollution Control WPC fiscal year 2017 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Bray?
I move that we approve the video inspection vehicle bid.
Second. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Brown. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Idaho Power easement, Pocatello Regional Airport. Counsel may wish to approve, subject, subject to legal department and engineering review, a Idaho power utility easement at the Pocatello Regional Airport.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel President Brown?
I move to approve this easement.
Second. We have a motion by President Brown and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this, uh, three minutes per person. We have one person, Idaho ORX.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I move that we deny item 14, discussion item.
Do you think?
Um, I don't know.
Can you do that?
Now, at this point, given that it's already on the published agenda, there's no, I would say there's probably a notice issue. This is something that belongs to the prerogative of the mayor who does control the agenda. The only issue I potentially see would be notice to anybody that so wished to speak, but at the same time, they may have an objection, but I don't see the remedy. So, at this point, if the council so wished to entertain to eliminate agenda item number 14, it's legally defensible.
But he, the motion was made to not have this on the agenda. It's not published. For, for tonight.
For tonight? I mean, I guess, though, it can be plagued one or two ways, Your Honor. Uh, either proceed, you do have a motion, we can deal with that as we could, um, whatever happens with the motion, then if it stays on the agenda, if the motion is addressed, then we, you have the option of either removing it-
Yep, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn. Okay, Idaho ORX.
Cut that on, Steve.
Yep, I just wanted to give some film.
Yeah, I did. Anyways, just a few announcements to make. For safety, this is our season of wind-blown contamination materials. Of course, everything that happened on May 12th goes down in the logs, and we're working on getting all the data we can for that, so we can share with the people of Pocatello on taking remedies to remove that material from their bodies on that special event, unusual event that took place on May 12th, that huge dust storm, first of the year to pick up uranium materials. But on that order is basically a warning, signage issues, informing of the people in the public of Howell Park and the Greys team for the uranium contamination there. That is up. Welcome to go and peruse, learn, go there and visit if you want to protect the materials. Bring your Geiger condoms, you know how to use them, but it's already been done, and for the protection of people in that area and our citizens using Howell Park area. Okay, uh, second one is the, please?
I was just asking a question. Did you put up a sign?
No.
Okay. Sounded like you did.
I think there's been signs up there before, been taken down.
Okay.
Okay. Number two is the road closure of Big Springs, uh, Route, Route National, Caribou Targi National Forest Road 39, I believe, for the uranium contamination that was done on that road, and all along the road, all over the road, tons and tons of it, so been gone out as a road closure for going to Big Springs area, which is left off of Whiskey Mike's, as they used to refer to it in this area, until we remedy the situation, which I have been in some meetings on that to try to remedy that for the future. Um, and that's basically our main two closures and issues we have right now, other than the schools themselves, but we'll bring that up as we deal with that legally. Okay? Thank you. Have a good weekend. The weather is nice, but careful of the wind.
Thank you very much. With that, that is the end of our agenda. I'd like to thank the council for their long day of work and the budget and everything, so thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.